This is, I will call the meeting to order again of the meeting fifth meeting of the Congress Select Board. I will call a roll, please.
I will. Mr. Howell?
Here.
Ms. Ackerman?
Present.
Ms. Escobedo?
Present.
Mr. Dane?
Present.
And myself, Mary Hartman, here.
Thank you. So now we will reopen the period for public comment. And if there's anybody who has some, has public comment on matters that will not be discussed at the meeting tonight, please feel free to do so at this time. Keeping in mind that any matter that, any comments relating to matters that we are taking up for decision tonight will be, can be made at the time that the individual item is being discussed or decided. So do we have anybody on Zoom who wishes to make a comment? Thank you. Then we will move on to the consent agenda. And we have, we have decided that we will take the regional housing agreement off the consent agenda. And so, and discuss that immediately afterward. So can we just then have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda. Second, roll call vote, Mr. Howell?
This is Linda.
Yes.
If, if we could just pull the piece on lowering the flag, just for some brief comment.
That's
Which? That's not on the consent agenda.
It's not on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, okay.
Let's proceed again.
Uh, Mr. Howell, sorry.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
All right. Now, now, before you had some questions about the, about the regional housing agreement, which Carrie thinks that we can answer now and then we can vote to approve it.
Okay. So, um, I, I think these are pretty easy questions. There's a note, I'm looking at Exhibit B, which shows each town's participation. And then it's Concord is very high, we're the second highest. And so my first question is why, or is this a typical year? Or is it because we have a lot of extra work to do this year with reconfiguring the whole Junction Village area? And getting our S H I straightened out and everything. And related to that, at the bottom, it says this fee structure does not include payment for supplemental services. So are we anticipating above what it says that we're even going to need more services and how we budget it accordingly?
Sure. So I, I do believe I can answer those questions. The, the percent of, of our share really isn't any different. There aren't additional, there are not additional hours contemplated in the, the fee schedule. We're not looking to necessarily to make up or anything like that. In fact, there are 10 communities versus in fiscal 24 versus nine. So without going back and looking at, at the current fee structure, I would say we're probably slightly lower than where we have been in the past years.
So we're generally one of the highest users of the service?
Yes.
Okay.
That being said, we have had some, I would say preliminary conversations with the Affordable Housing Trust that has a need for some staff services that may be able to be met through the staff at the Regional Housing Services Office. So there is a possibility that we may, that the trust may look to contract with our HSO. But if that happens, that would be paid for through trust funds.
Okay. So the rest of it is budgeted for already?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a three-year contract, not just one year.
Right. I was just looking at the estimates for one, for this year in Exhibit B. Okay.
Actually, I have a question. I'm glad we pulled this off. Concord hosts this. What does that mean exactly?
So it means that we provide office space for a fee. They, there is a rental. We do provide administrative support services through the Department of Planning and Land Management for a fee.
Okay.
So we are, we're the host community, but we do get reimbursed for the services that we provide.
Good. So are we okay now? Okay. Move to approve the Regional Housing Services Office inter municipal agreement.
Second.
Roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye. And then committee appointments, right? Is next. I'm gonna do, you want me to move the committee appointments?
Yes, please.
Uh, move to appoint Abigail Flanagan of 397 Main Street for a term to expire May 31, 2028 to the Planning Board. I'm just gonna keep going as opposed, move to appoint Chris Randall of 150 Central Street for a term to expire May 31, 2026 to the West Concord Cultural District Committee. Move to appoint Pamela Talbot of 188 Conan Street for a term to expire May 31, 2026 to the Personnel Board. And finally, move to approve the Town Manager Appointment of Nancy Nelson of 1695 Lowell Road for a term to expire May 31, 2024 as an associate member to the Historical Commission.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Now we'll proceed to the Town Manager Report.
Okay, thank you. And good evening. I'm referring to the report of the weekend in June 2nd, which was just, just distributed to you, distributed to you late this afternoon. So we had a, a group of town staff attend the Legislative Breakfast convened by the MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Their legislative meeting in Maynard, I believe this was last week. This is an event that brings 13 communities northwest of Boston working collaboratively together on regional concerns, bringing them together for discussion and learning. At this particular meeting, the topics of discussion were stormwater, flooding, rental assistance for families in transition, and the lack of industrial zoning in, in the area. I also note that we have been monitoring the debt ceiling crisis on Capitol Hill. One of our biggest concerns was that we were receiving reports from Congresswoman Treagan's office in, in particular, that one of the topics of discussion was a potential clawback of ARPA funding. We have since learned that the, the federal government has, since they've distributed all of the ARPA funding to localities, they've considered that obligated. And so that's off the table. So, and, and obviously there's been a resolution to the debt ceiling issue anyway. But we, we definitely were worried about the potential of, of having unspent ARPA funds taken back. And there's a note that we have 4.375 million unspent, not all uncommitted. We have about three, three, three and a half million uncommitted at this point. But unspent is, is higher than that. Um, we have our usual information about the activity in, in both our police and fire departments and some notes about different trainings that our public safety personnel, staff members have attended over the last couple of weeks. I also note that Officer Sylvia Tumayen retired from the Police Department after 27 years of service. Her last day was last Wednesday, May 31st. We had a very nice gathering for her. She is not the first female officer to retire from the department. I thought she might have been, but apparently we have had other female officers retire. We do have a, a nice, a nice grouping of, of six female officers. I'm, I'm very proud of that. Not a lot of communities, even in this day and age, still have, or have that many officers. There is a little bit of a longer write-up about, sort of a, just a, a little short memoir of Sylvia's time with the department that's included in the report. We thought that was a nice way to, to commemorate her service. Uh, the Council on Aging, their, their outreach team, which consists of a social services supervisor, two outreach workers, and a geriatric health nurse have served 565 seniors during this fiscal year. I thought that was very notable. There's, there's quite a, a write-up here. But this group of staff members assists seniors with all aspects of health, well-being, and aging, transportation issues, assistance accessing home care, financial assistance, food and housing insecurity, utility help, medical advocacy, just a wide variety of services provided by this group of four individuals. And anybody in the community that thinks that they might be benefited by these services is encouraged to contact the Senior Center at 978-318-3020. The White Pond Beach opened on Memorial Day weekend. There were 196 members in attendance. We have 33 lifeguards, water, the waterfront team consists of 33 lifeguards that will be working at the beach over the season. Right now until June 19th, we're only open on weekends. Beginning on June 20th through August 20th, the beach will be open seven days a week from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Day passes are available for $5 per person. I did want to make a note that the BD pools remain closed while we continue to investigate the, the issue with combined chlorine, which impacts the ability of the pools to, to be, have a proper level of disinfectant. At this point, I think the pools, I think this is week six, the beginning of week six, that the pools have been closed. This is a, a perplexing problem. We have had engineers, chemists, pool maintenance companies and, and other professionals in to help us try to diagnose what the problem is. The, we've had air quality specialists in. All four of the pools are drained at this point. We're doing some additional air quality testing and replacing some equipment and hoping, hoping for the best. But it has been a very perplexing problem. And I know it, it's frustrating to, to members of the BD. The staff over there is, is doing what it can to help provide alternatives to members during this time who are interested in indoor swimming. Um, the BD Center will be running free yoga in the park on Saturdays in July to celebrate National Parks and Recreation Month. These classes are being sponsored by local businesses. There's information about the classes advertised on the web and no registration is required to participate. And I just wanted to make two other notes about some, well, actually three in our Department of Public Works. As you know, because you, you approved a proclamation a couple of weeks ago, it was National Public Works Week. The Public Works Department had a luncheon barbecue for staff that was very well attended. Megan and I attended that. It was, it was really a very nice event and a great opportunity for staff there to connect with their coworkers outside of, outside of the work environment. Two additional items, we have instituted Level One Lawn Water Use Restrictions as of May 30th. This was approved by the Public Works Commission. And, and the reason for this is, it will, it, it means that we are limiting lawn watering to one day per week. It was required as seasonal demands began to rise while supply, supply remains limited due to ongoing infrastructure improvements. Obviously, the weather we've had the last several days have helped that situation out, but we still have the Level One Water Restrictions. And then finally, a note that the Engineering Department has prepared a request for qualifications for consultants for engineering services to evaluate the need to develop a plan for stormwater utility for the town. Many communities in Massachusetts have implemented a stormwater utility. We are hoping to have something ready for the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. And this would provide a source of funding for future stormwater utility improvements. And that is it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a few.
Yeah.
So can I, um, great. I'm great. I'm really glad to see the stormwater management plan underway. Do you envision, maybe this is too soon, but do you envision that will be a separate enterprise fund for stormwater?
Ideally, it would be a separate enterprise fund.
Okay, okay. While we're on the topic of water management, can you give us an update on what's happening with wastewater management? Any plan, the plan?
Sure. And I would turn to Deputy Town Manager Megan Zamuto for that.
Great.
Thank you. Yes, last month, we received a notice that some funds were available for the Massachusetts Community Planning Grants to support communities that are looking to create more opportunities for housing. So the Concord Public Works and DPLM staff met to determine if we had any eligible projects. And since we had been working towards an update of our Concord Waste Management Plan and had a scope in hand, we were able to use that to apply for a grant for that purpose. So the, we are moving forward with that. We, we applied last week. The estimated cost for the updated plan is $125,000 and the grant was for up to $100,000. So we're hoping that, you know, we could potentially receive some funds towards that plan. And, you know, the, the tie-in here is that Concord has created this housing production plan with goals towards creating more housing, complying with MBTA Communities Law. But we need to realign our wastewater capacity with the goals of the community and housing production.
Follow-up question. So how much of this grant do you think is dependent upon our willingness to be serious about the MBTA Community Zoning Act?
I think it's critical. And I think that in our application, we showed that we, we are dedicated to complying because it's part of one of our goals for the Housing Production Plan. So, and we're making progress towards compliance. So I, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's in the works and it's, we're hoping for a grant for the 100K. Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up about that too? I thought one of the problems was that the state needs to approve more capacity at our wastewater treatment plant? And how does that fit in with this grant?
So we do have, that's our NPT's permit. We, we do have an application to increase the processing capacity allowed under the NPT's permit in front of the state. It, it has been, I'm, I'm not sure if denied is too strong a word, but it has not been approved. And it has been there for a significant amount of time. Actually, thinking about it further, I do not believe it has been denied, but, but it's not being looked upon favorably right now. And we continue to press that issue because we have the ability to process an additional capacity within the existing infrastructure without any, any need to
Right.
to spend additional funding. So we're, we're trying to, to get that approved.
So what I don't understand is what the purpose of this other grant is that we've just applied for?
Sure. Well, so this, we have a Concord Waste Management Plan from about 20 years ago that's assessing all of our capacity for wastewater management in town. And it, it needs to be updated so that, I mean, if this is not approved, the NPT's permit, we need to have other options on the table. So this is kind of looking at a holistic approach. We're planning to do it anyway. This is a grant that we're hoping to get some funding towards it since it seemed to align. But the, the effort is we're planning to move forward with this assessment of wastewater.
We need to do, work on wastewater capacity on two fronts. One at the treatment plant and one at us, the capacity in town as a whole.
Right. So the, so the, the plan itself is, would be, it, it assesses the need across the town and it would inform future capital improvements and permit requirements.
If, if you had a plant that had the capacity and the quality of the effluent met all the necessary standards, what would be the basis for not granting the permit to increase the, the capacity and the, you know, the output of our, of our wastewater management system?
So the, the issue, and this is not my area of expertise, so I don't want to get into this too, too much. But the, the issue is the, the volume of discharge into the water, the waterways. And, and so it's an, it's an environmental issue. There are environmental concerns. And we are hoping that the state will balance the environmental concerns against the need to have the ability to treat wastewater.
Is there an environmental issue if the effluent is compliant with the, with the standards for what it's supposed to be?
So I, I would say that, that our, our opinion is no. But that, that doesn't mean that there is general agreement on that. But no, the, the effluent has to meet standards. And it does meet those standards, but that, that doesn't mean that it, that alleviates all of the environmental concerns that, that people have.
So I'm glad, I'm glad to see that.
I saw Linda's hand raised, but no, it's not. But did you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you for that. My questions have been answered. Thank you.
I have another question, very quickly. Can you give us an update on what's happening with the planters at Junction Park?
Before we leave the wastewater, can I just ask one thing?
Yeah.
Oh, the grant that you were talking about, would that include looking at areas of town that are currently not served by the sewer system and assessing the needs for whether or not there should be some kind of bigger wastewater treatment signed to those areas?
I believe it will.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Junction Park.
Junction Park, quickly. What's happening with the planters there?
I have a meeting this week about that.
Great.
To look into it. Upon Marsha's retirement, I am going to be the point person to work on that effort. And so I am starting to look into that this week and I'll follow up.
Okay. I think the CPW needs to be involved as well. Right.
So just one additional note on that. I, I do know from one of my final conversations with Marsha that the MBTA, that we were required to submit the plan to them for comment. And we're still awaiting comment from, from the MBTA on certain aspects of, of that proposed improvement.
Thank you.
I have a, a follow-up about the first question about the stormwater. You indicated it might be an enterprise fund. Where would the revenue come from?
So it would be a surcharge on development.
Okay, okay.
On incremental development or people who live on private roads right now?
So I think that's, that's all part of, of the study that we would need to do. I mean, that, that is really the intent of the study is how do you levy a fee? What is the fee? How do you, how do you assess it across properties?
Got it.
Something that's parallel to the sewer improvement fee, in, in effect.
Well, it's, it's a, a different type of fee, but a, a fee on development to, to fund future improvement.
All right. Are we, are we ready to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the, um,
Speaking to the mic. We can't hear, we can't hear you, Henry.
All right. Thank you. Are we ready to move on to the next item on the agenda? Or do we have any public comment on the issues that we have just discussed? All right. Then we move on to the next item.
Henry, I just, I forgot to announce, once the Zoom was working again, about the Committee Recognition Day on June 15th at 5 o'clock. All committee members should come. We appreciate and we want to have a party for you. Thank you.
Free food.
Yes.
So the next item on the agenda is the Amendment to the APP 16 with regard to flag raising on the town main flag pole that came before us because of the desire to recognize Juneteenth, which is, have been recognized as a national holiday and a state holiday and which the, in which the town of Concord is about to recognize by a declaration or a proclamation in favor of Juneteenth as an occasion. And a request was made that the, that a flag recognizing Juneteenth, which was originally designed, I think, in Texas to commemorate this, this occasion, be flown underneath the American flag on the flag pole. And there were some issues that we needed to deal with in order to be able to accomplish that. There are some materials in the packet about Juneteenth and, and the flag itself. The issues were, um, um, how, how was it in the current, let's see, legal context? Could we, uh, we, could we have the ability to fly, to fly something, a flag on our flag pole that represented a point of view without also making it necessary for us to recognize all points of view and make that into a public forum? And after consultation with Town Council, Town Council was, was, was comfortable with the concept of the, having it be a decision that the Select Board could make as a, as a representation of the municipal speech. And if the flag were approved by the Select Board as a representative, the representation of a view that was held by, by the town officially, but then the town could express its point of view on this issue by authorizing the flying of a flag on the flag pole under those conditions. This required an amendment of the, um, the policy procedure, which dealt with, with flying of flags on the, on the town flag pole, which up to this point had dealt exclusively with the issue of, on what occasions a flag would be lowered to half mast in recognition of various events and occasions. So we've added to APP 16, we've changed the title, and it has a provision that says, other flags may be raised below the American flag on town old flag poles provided that, A, each such flag is no longer, no larger in any dimension than the American flag flown above it. And B, only when, if, and for such period of time as the town of Concord acting through its Select Board expressly on each occasion and in its sole discretion, authorizing the raising of such flag. The town's flag poles are not and are not intended to serve as a forum for free expression by the public. Flags may be displayed by the town as an expression of the town's official sentiments by a vote of the Select Board as set forth above. It shall be a condition of the foregoing authorization that the town shall acquire and retain ownership of all such flags at or before the time they are first raised. And they shall only be raised and lowered by the fire department in accordance with the procedures already outlined. And if the Select Board adopts this amendment to the procedure, then we will then have before us a vote to, to make the declaration that is called for in the procedure, that this is an expression of the town's, town's point of view on the issue. So is there any discussion on this?
That's fine.
No?
I think it's sensible. I think it's good. Linda, Linda has her hand raised.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. I, I appreciate the thoughtful work that was done on this. I'm, I agree with it. I just want to point out, however, that if we are updating this amendment, that we're consistent
that we're consistent in referring to the select board, uh, I think there's two places that still use the older terminology.
I think we could make that as a, um, as a as a typographical amendment to, uh,
Yep.
Typically what happens is that when you, when you, uh, um, adapt an old procedure to, uh, meet a current standards or circumstances, um, you change as little of, as possible of what was there before, but we can certainly bring the terminology consistent with select board.
And select board member, right? I think Linda might be referring to the case of selectmen.
Right. Yes, exactly. Yep. Good.
Okay.
We can make it, uh, new to gentle.
Thank you.
Um, so, um, is there any discussion on this from the public before we vote on it? Hearing none, I will undertake a motion to, uh, adopt the amendment to the, uh, APP 16, flag raising and lowering.
Move to approve the proposed amendments to administrative policy and procedure number 16, flag raising and lowering on town-owned flagpoles as included in the select board meeting packet and as amended um, during our conversation to replace board of selectmen with select board.
Second.
Um, I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Thank you. So the next item of business is related to that, which is the, um, proclamation that has been drafted, uh, for the approval of the select board uh, in recognition of Juneteenth. And that is in the packet, uh, that was, that was actually drafted by the town's DEI commission and is, um, here on, on the, on the agenda with, uh, with our approval.
So I, I think you approved the proclamation under the consent.
Did we?
And would, this item is actually the request to approve the flying of the flag.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I had them mixed up in my packet too.
We, we, this was approved already.
Yes.
But now we've got to do this.
To approve the raising of the flag.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
And the, um, what I wanted to be careful about in taking that vote because it did not carry through to the, um, to the list of motion. And that is that the motion needs to say, in addition to us approving the raising of the flag, um, raising the Juneteenth flag on June 19th. If we also need to de- declare that the, um, uh, that this is, um, an expression of the town's official sentiments. Um, and, um, and that the flag will be raised on June 19th by the fire department uh, in accordance with the balance of the procedure. And that the, um, that it will be a condition that the town take ownership of the flag that is flown.
Isn't that already written down in the APP 16 as we just approved?
But it isn't in the motion. That's, I'm just saying that the, I would like the motion to reflect the, uh, procedure.
Okay. Do you want to advance the motion or no, you really can't?
And I do have one question. So are we presuming here, because I don't think we've said it out loud, that the flag will be flown for one day, June 19th? Like, what is the duration of the flag flying?
That would be correct.
Okay.
That's the intention and that's what the, and that is what the motion should say.
Can we have the motion just be as it's written here to approve the flag raising on June 19th and then say in accordance with, uh, APP 16?
Yeah.
In accordance with all the conditions of the new APP 16?
Those conditions al- also have to state the, the, the date that it will be flown.
Right. June 19th.
It does. Right. It does.
All right.
Okay. Move to approve the request of the, of flag raising to honor June 19th National Independence Day on June 19th, 2023, in accordance with the, um, amended administrative policy and procedure number 16.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye. Good.
Now we come to the Bruce Freeman Trail.
One of the trail comes to you.
Hmm?
One of the trail comes to you.
So, again, we have a, um, a proposed, um, amendment to the charge of the, um, committee that, that would, um, reduce the number of members in the committee. And we had, we have discussed this, I think, at our last, at our last meeting. And then, um, a couple of members of the board also had requests that the charge is revised, but also, um, would include a greater breadth of interests of the users of the, of the, of the trail. And I don't know if we really ever really reached a final conclusion on that. But I, I think at least two members of the board would like to see some additional changes to the, um, amended charge as presented to us.
Right. So I think this new charge tonight is amended.
It is amended. And I guess, uh, there were two changes, as Henry pointed out, and one was in the background. And I think that's fine. And then the other was, um, actually specifying, um, the membership. And that was Linda's point. So I think we should turn to Linda and see what, if, if she's happy with the way this charge is written.
Yeah, I tried to determine in advance whether she was, but Linda, would you, uh, please?
I'll briefly, I'll briefly comment. Thank you. Um, and I, again, I want to thank Nat and, uh, and his committee for their work on this. Um, I was pleased to see that a change had been made in the background section. Um, I did hear on Nat's, um, comment of last, uh, meeting that he needed some flexibility in the membership and that, um, the language in this amended charge says they will, um, choose members from the categories that were in the background section. So I, um, I, I think that was put forward, I hope in good faith, and I'm going to accept it in good faith. So thank you for your work on this.
Oh, thank you, Mrs. Escobedo.
Again, it sounds like we're ready for a motion.
We are.
Yeah, we have one just super minor thing, but in the very first line under purpose, it says Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee and then defines that as BFR TAC, which should be, the word advisory is missing between. My apologies. That is my fault. No worries. I will take accountability for that and make sure it's corrected.
Okay.
And I have a very brief comment, um, per what Linda said. It's the select board that, um, appoints this committee. So it will be up to us to decide if we have a wide enough range of trail users and we will have that discretion. So I think this charge will be, uh, what we want it to be.
Good, good point.
And I think that's, um, that's a, a direction I would like to see us in, um, charging and establishing committees is that we not, um, predetermine.
Right.
At least to an excessive degree as to how the committees would be constituted. Uh, and rather for us to be able to exercise our discretion as to who is available and what the needs of the committee might be at any particular time. So, but I think that's a good direction to move in.
Okay, we're ready? Good. Move to approve the proposed amendments of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee charge as included in the select board meeting packet.
Second.
Was I supposed to put the word advisor in there or not?
Well, with the word advisor, it added in the first line.
Yes. So that's still in there.
I will, it, it will be, uh, whatever we come out with, it will have it in there.
Okay, okay.
I apologize.
Move to approve the proposed amendments of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee charge as included in the select board meeting packet.
Second.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye. Thank you.
May I make one, uh, to answer the question about Junction Park and the, and the planters? Um, just if that's, if you, if that's okay.
Are you okay with that?
Brief. Okay, brief. Um, the, the planters, um, have been, uh, are in the process of being ordered. The MBTA requires that anything placed within 30 feet of the tracks gets approved, which is why we had to file a, a special piece for that. When the planters do arrive, the committee, the committee on disabilities, um, are going to have an open, uh, public meeting at the site to kind of see where the planters are before they're filled. So we can have the conversations that were necessary to figure out where should they go exactly, uh, on the plan and, and, cause some members of the Commission on Disabilities were concerned. This, our, our member was that one of the planters might get in the way of people moving around the park. So uh, that's where it is. Um, nothing set in stone or in planters yet, but it's, it's available. I would also just like to thank, um, I would, I would like to thank, uh, Megan Zamudo, Steve Dukran, Alan Cathcart and Aaron Stevens for a very speedy response to a safety incident at the, um, at the railroad station two weeks ago, uh, which I also found out there was a second incident on June 2nd with regard to a person in a wheelchair getting stuck in the tracks. This team has done an amazing job of getting a response. So I just wanted to, uh, pass the committee's thanks on to you and your team for, for doing that work. So, thank you. That's all I had to say.
You, you'll understand that, um, if everybody is happy, our job is much easier.
Yeah. Right.
Okay. And that's, that's very important.
I really appreciate the, the town's staff's work, um, with that. So thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on, of business is, uh, the National Park Restoration Program of the Daniel Chester French statue of the Minuteman. And we have with us the distinguished director, Simone Monti, Monti Leoni.
Good evening. Thank you so much for welcoming me back. I wanted to give you a, a quick update on where we are with our Great American Outdoors Act project. And in particular, to get approval this evening for the, uh, next group of work, which is focused on the conservation of the statue, the Minuteman statue, as well as the obelisk at the, uh, North Bridge Unit. Um, so per our 1963 agreement, um, I have forwarded to you the scope of work for both of those, um, uh, particular actions. Uh, the, the hope is that we would be able to start the work on the Minuteman statue, uh, later this month with the obelisk work, uh, happening, uh, tentatively in August, everything, uh, weather dependent, of course. Um, but you'll note that the, the work that we're proposing is really just a cleaning, uh, focusing on, uh, waxing and, uh, addressing any patina issues, uh, that have come with the, uh, wax that has at this point, uh, degraded uh, on the statue in particular for Minuteman, um, and then a cleaning for the obelisk itself.
Great. Thank you. I took the opportunity to run that program by one of our conservation experts, David Wood at the, at the Concord Museum. And he was, he thought you were doing the right thing.
Thank you.
We actually would like to talk to your conservation contractors about some other issues that we'd like to at least talk to them about.
Sure. No, absolutely. Be happy to help.
Thank you.
A quick question. So the, this is great. I'm glad you're doing this work and I'm glad you have the money to do it too. Um, we had talked earlier about replacing the pavers on the trail coming down to that. Do you remember ta- talking about that? Is that, this is not part of this, I understand, but going forward, what other work do you see coming?
So yeah, so we'll be coming back to the board for the work that's going to be focusing on the trail rehabilitation, uh, the North Bridge. Uh, so right now, um, our trail contractor is on board. Uh, so we had initial plans, which we had shared with the town of Concord. Um, but in particular, the area around, um, the North Bridge, we're trying to make some improvements to some of the drainage issues that we have there. So we were waiting for our contractor to be on board, um, so we can revise the drawings that we have developed in-house. And then we would be submitting them in particular to the Natural Resources Commission, um, because it is right there along the river. But the trail rehabilitation should address, um, in particular what you're mentioning as it relates to leading up to the statue.
Okay. And when will that happen? Do you, do you have any idea?
So we are hoping to have the drawings ready this summer.
Okay.
To bring to the commissions.
Great.
I just want to thank you, Simone, for all your activism and getting ahead of the curve on all of these projects and coming to the board and really communicating and working with us. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, you know, we want to make sure that the public is aware as well as that the, the board is, um, um, fully understanding all the work that's happening, because it's a lot and it's happening very quickly. So.
And, and we appreciate finding out about all of this and working with you. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And we also appreciate your active participation and the participation of your staff in the 2025 Executive Committee.
Thank you.
Really?
All right.
Okay. We do. Move to approve. We do. Move to approve the conservation work on the Minuteman statue and obelisk in Minuteman National Park, historic park, as included in the select board meeting packet.
Second.
Mr. Howell?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the entertainment. It's just a town meeting. The, um, the next item on the agenda is a discussion, um, primarily of the action-oriented, um, measures that we think are appropriate for dealing with the, um, uh, the Hanscom North, um, uh, Development Project. Um, I have, um, extensive, uh, materials that I put into the packet, um, which I attempted to outline what some of the practical options were in terms of going forward. I think there's no question that this is a project that has been universally opposed uh, by everybody who has spoken, uh, on it in the town of Concord. And most of the people in other towns, except perhaps the town of Bedford, which, uh, will directly benefit from the economic development and the, probably the tax reviews that will derive from, um, this project, which will be, uh, mostly if not entirely in the town of Bedford, but of course the resulting activity, um, will be, um, will overflow into the whole, um, surrounding area. So, um, the upshot was that we had a, an extended hearing on this, um, at our last meeting. And, um, I think that we have essentially two courses of action or two areas in which we can, um, um, perhaps have some influence on where this project goes. The first one has to do with the environmental review, which is now underway. And, um, um, I've included some materials about that review and the status of it. I'm not aware of anything that has happened since October when there, um, the, um, the scope of the review was presented, uh, um, by the, uh, with, by, um, Massport. Um, and the other prong is to, um, attempt to influence Massport itself through the agency of the, of the state administration, uh, since the, since Massport is, uh, all the members are appointees of the governor and they are the ones who have the final say on, on whether to proceed with the project as far as we know. Um, we've had some other questions, um, about what, um, who actually owns the property, whether the tran- land transfer from this, from, uh, Massport to the developers has been completed, even though it has been, was approved by Governor Baker and so on. But, um, um, and then also I had some exchanges with, um, our, our American Heritage about, uh, writing a letter to the governor signed by, on behalf of the select board, uh, our American Heritage. And, um,
I think it's, um, Save Our Heritage.
Save Our Heritage, yes. I get the, save our heritage. And, um, um, and there's, I think substantial sentiment for getting all of the, uh, interested parties to collectively, um, sign on to some kind of a statement to the governor, which would include not only the municipalities involved, but also the entities involved such as Save Our Heritage, the Audubon Society, and. and, and the National Park. And so I think we can attack this in a number of fronts, and what we really need to do is actually get kind of some sense about what we're going to do and who's going to do it, because the key to accomplishing anything is to have somebody do it, not to talk about it. So where do you want to go from here?
What do you propose? What do you propose?
What I propose is that because the environmental review is a very tactical and and arcane process, that we look into engaging the services on a retainer basis of an environmental lawyer, who would monitor the process and advise us how we could, how we can intervene in that process, because we, I think our feeling is if the truth is told about the carbon impact of the proposal, it will be, it will be realized that it is, it will have very substantial impact on the carbon impact, and that the, that is contrary, as was pointed out at our last meeting, contrary to the, the carbon management program adopted by the state. So that's, I think, so I think we want to, that's what I would propose, is that we look into getting some professional assistance on the review and monitoring of the environmental process.
So, so Henry, I really like that idea. I think that's great. I think we should think about whether all four of the HATS communities together should engage this council for, for various reasons. You mentioned, for example, that Bedford might have slightly different agenda than Concord. I certainly don't want each of our four towns to get their own attorney, and then it's like a divide and conquer situation where the attorneys, you know, I think if we're united, it might, it, I don't know, I guess I'd like to ask Linda about, you know, the HATS, whether HATS might want to do this, and I guess you can't speak for them, Linda, but.
Well, at the last, at our last Select Board meeting, I mentioned I had attended the recent HATS meeting, where this topic was obviously discussed, and I think in general, people had concerns about this going forward, certainly on the basis of the, the climate impact. Bedford said that they had taken a vote at their Select Board, but they had different reasons. I don't think there was unanimity on the Bedford Select Board, as I recall them reporting out. They were not, they didn't, and at least one of the, their HATS representative from Bedford said that they had, she had not agreed to the reason for the opposition being the climate change impact, but she had, they had more local concerns about impact on disturbing a current, existing superfund site that's tangential to the proposed new development at Hanscom. The impact it was going to have on their wastewater treatment and much more local impact of municipal services, as opposed to taking the cutting edge on the climate. So there was at least some difference of opinion on that, on, on the Bedford Board, but, and no clear statement that night about what position they would take in solidarity with the other HATS communities that were clearly ready to step up and take a position opposing the expansion.
Okay, well, I guess I'm specifically wondering if other board members think Concord should get an attorney itself, or we should propose this to the other HATS communities and do it as a joint effort?
I think we need a quiet person. Sorry, Linda, go ahead.
Sorry, you know, if, if that's where our board wants to be, I certainly would be willing to discuss that with the current Chair of HATS and see what his reaction is to it.
To, to Concord getting their own attorney?
No, if, if the four communities might consider going together, if that's where we ended up in our decision-making.
The, the, I think while in principle, it's, it, it seems advantageous to have everyone coordinated and working together, the difficulties of making that process work, and the time that it takes to get everybody on the same page, and the loss of control that you, that you suffer from by having many bosses of somebody who is working for you, means that I think we have to decide in which areas cooperation is going to be most effective in terms of getting the job done, and what areas where it might make more sense for us to take the initiative and see whether the others follow, because I doubt that, I, what I guess is that if we want to do this, we will be the first ones to do it, and that others either won't, won't, others will just join in with us if they want to, or they will let us do the job, which is, which may be the best way to do it.
Okay, when you say do it, do you mean write a letter, or do you mean start, what does do it mean exactly?
I think starting the, the, starting the process of putting, of, of getting, getting somebody to work with on understanding and monitoring the environmental review. That's what I think is.
I think that's, I think that's a good.
Something I think we could probably, that I, at least we should explore on our own. I have, I have a particular person in mind I want to talk to, if this is something we want to pursue, and I think we could use that expertise, and we look, you have to look at what the cost should be, but I think that on a retainer basis, advisory basis, it would probably be a worthwhile investment of time and effort. As far as writing letters go, I think what I would like to do is to have some, someone among us to draft a letter and circulate it among the other interested parties for comment and for development, so that we would end up with a, with a product that was satisfactory to everybody, but that we would start the process, because if we don't, it won't happen.
What do you mean, everybody? Everybody on this board?
No, I mean, the, the other communities and interested, the other interested players in the process. That's what I'd like to see.
Okay, Henry, I, I like your idea of getting legal counsel to understand and monitor the environmental impacts, and I agree with you, the points that you made earlier, as far as someone needs to take the lead. My only concern is, is that we don't become myopic, and, and we think of it, I think we learned at the hearing the last time, that we want to think of this more as a statewide problem, not just a Concord problem. And I worry, and I'm just concerned that if we're taking the lead and we're managing the person and the process, that it might become that. So how do we avoid that?
Well, I think that if you frame the question in the right way, namely, our awareness of the problem arises from the fact that we are living in the middle of it, and that, 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 that makes us aware of the fact that this is a problem, which is much larger than one that affects our community, and that it does involve very seriously the policies of the state with regard to the environmental and carbon issues, and so I think you can make the statewide and universal arguments, it is a universal environment we live in, and, and you give it meaning and immediacy by saying we're living in it, and that's why we're aware of it, and so I, I think you can balance those two, the local and the, and the universal.
So when you first raised the, the idea, I was thinking specifically about the environmental impact report and the responses to the report, and whether we might retain an attorney who would specifically focus on making sure that all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and that they're, and that nothing's sort of getting missed in that report. And at least in my mind, I, I separate that a little bit from the, the very global issue of the fact that, you know, these jets or super emitters, Hanscom's operations itself is sort of creating an appalling level of greenhouse gas emissions that I think most of us have newly become much more familiar with, and I'm inclined to say that what we probably need to do is think about what legislative initiatives and what, and what policy based initiatives we could be taking to, to combat that activity. That led me to, to considering the, the area that we actually do get some revenue from, which is the jet fuel excise tax. So in our FY twenty-seven budget, we're receiving two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is up a little bit year over year. It was two fifty estimated for FY twenty-three, and it's been in that general area for a number of years, for jet fuel excise tax. To my way of thinking, that is nowhere near sufficient to cover the environmental impact of having to accept all those greenhouse gas emissions, and I think we should potentially be looking at what, if anything, we can be doing to potentially get those excise taxes raised. It should be much more expensive to operate these kinds of aircraft, notwithstanding whether there's hangars or not, just, and this would have an immediate impact potentially on, on, on the operations that are disrupting us today, because really what we're seeing, the two major impacts for Concord anyway, are the sound, the noise. Those of us that are living under the runway, run, flight path, know that they're working on the runways now because of the changes and the patterns that have taken place over the last couple of weeks, and so it's the noise and the greenhouse gases, which are, which are just obvious and driven by the, the actual flight operations. Along those lines, I think there's also potentially room for looking at what, if anything, can be done to influence the, you know, the, the fees that are paid, particularly for the night operations, which seem to be considerably more frequent. I mean, I'm hearing them at three in the morning, and, and that's clearly outside of the seven AM to eleven PM window, and every time it goes overhead, I think it just can't possibly be expensive enough for them to be doing this.
Well, it can't be, but of course, the cost, I think of all of that at Hanscom is much lower than it is at Logan.
Mm-hmm. Well, to be, to be clear about it, and to, I think, Mary's point around, we don't want to separate, I would be supportive of trying to get jet fuel excise taxes raised basically everywhere, especially for, you know, the classes of aircraft that we're talking about here, which are, which are private, you know, maybe there's commercial, military, obviously humanitarian kinds of things, you know, municipal operations or something, there's ways to get refunds on taxes. We, the, the town doesn't pay taxes on things that it procures now, and so there's ways around that, but I'm thinking that there's a, there's a broader set of agendas that I'd like to be engaging our legislative representatives in, at the same time that we're raising our voices, hopefully in conjunction with our, with the neighboring towns around this particular project.
Well, I think that's, I, I take, I, I'm very wary of sin taxes, and when government becomes dependent on the taxes that get raised on cigarettes and gasoline and, and alcohol, what happens is it means that you no longer control them, because you, you derive so much revenue from them, that you become financially dependent on them. I, I think that's, it may not, it may not hurt to use those as sources of revenue, but I think we, I would prefer to take a more direct approach to remedy, remedying the evil that we, and having the freedom to remedy the evil that we, we want to, we want to control, and also and, you know, in terms of prohibition rather than taxing, and also in terms of the environment, addressing the environmental issues directly, because an environmental review is an essential portion of any of the activities that, any of these activities, and as the ultimate, the ultimate result is that a project like this can be delayed almost indefinitely if there is an inadequate environmental review, and with the long drawn-out litigation that results likely of the Nantucket Sound Wind, which was on the other side of the equation, the, the wind farms in Nantucket Sound, or the, bringing in the hydroelectric power from Canada through upper New England, where those projects were delayed, like, you know, just in, for incredible periods of time because of the environmental process, environmental review process, which has to be one of the arrows in our quiver.
Right.
And I'm not saying that it shouldn't be.
Right, I think we actually have three, a three-pronged attack that we can do. First of all, Henry, you're talking about engaging an environmental lawyer, and secondly, we need to write a draft letter, and, you know, all of us sign on to a letter. But I think Mark is right, there are some other things that we have to do. I watched, I wasn't here unfortunately, but I watched the meeting, and there were a lot of good suggestions, like the way the tax law is now, the incentives are all wrong for private jets. So I think it was Neil suggested, let's pressure the legislature to get that tax law changed, so when people buy jets and use jets, they have the right incentives instead of the wrong ones. Also, Mark Galus brought up a great point about getting the whole Massport mission redrafted. These are long-term things, but I think we need to be working on them. The whole mission of Massport might be different now than when it was set up way back. Their mission does not align well with today's world, I don't, I don't think, and it just helps a few wealthy people, so that's, that's not working right now. Also, the, the penalty for the flights that Mark and Pam were talking about, I think it's several hundred dollars for them to fly between eleven PM and seven AM. That's totally out of date. So all of these things, we can be pressuring our legislature to get the law changed, and at the same time, we could be engaging an environmental attorney. I still think we should do it jointly, but we should do it one way or the other, and we should have a joint letter. So we have a three-pronged attack.
And I was sort of suggesting that I, I like the idea of engaging an attorney to, to represent us and to, to really bird dog the, the environmental assessment process, and it seems to me that that's something where, as long as that's scoped to that, that allows for the very real possibility that other, that the other HATS communities, for example, might, might like to do that. I listened carefully to both the HATS meeting and, and the Hanscom Field Advisory Commission, and I, I know some of the Bedford residents were raising things like wetlands concerns, and, you know, which are obviously legitimate concerns, but are also the fact that there's certain specific areas of the development and the fact that it's in Bedford, and so we're not directly a party to those, but it makes, and it makes sense for them to pursue those, you know, separately and independently, and through whatever happens with their Conservation Commission, I think they call it.
As long as we don't get in a situation of divide and conquer. we don't get in a situation of divide and conquer, I think Massport would like nothing better if, you know, Bedford and Concord disagree, blah, blah, blah. We really need to avoid that situation.
Well, even more than that, I think the divide and conquer also applies to making our region fight against Worcester or fight against Chelsea. So I keep, I keep wanting to remind us that this is bigger than just our region. But I I I'm hearing a lot of really good ideas. But I I think I want to be realistic about what the select board, the Concord Select Board can accomplish. We can put pressure, we can maybe bring in our hats representatives, or we can bring in Ira and Mark Giddings and say what's happening, but and we can put pressure on our legislators, on Simon Cataldo and Carmen Gentile. But other than that, I'm not sure we can, we're not going to influence the taxes that they charge for jet fuel. And we're not going to influence the sales tax they charge for buying a jet or outfitting a jet. But we can write a letter and we can hire an attorney that, as Mark says, will bird dog some of these environmental issues. And maybe we can also get other legal firms involved, like the the Conservation Law Foundation, or maybe the Audubon Society, maybe this person can engage them to take a broader appeal. And maybe we can also engage other people that would help us fund a broader effort. I don't want Concord to carry the whole thing. So I just want to be realistic as far as what we could, what we can accomplish here.
I think to your point about, you know, very specific things that we could do, I I noticed that on the hats membership, we really only have Linda listed. Other communities have non voting members typically from the planning board or their or their conservation commission listed as. And so we're only covering hats with one person from Concord. And so I would suggest that we should, you know, put out a call for for some strong candidates for participation at that at that, because hats is also a regional planning organization that's involved in coordinating that. And so my understanding is that is that traditionally communities have put a planning board member as well as somebody from from one of their from their conservation group on onto hats as non voting members to coordinate some of those activities in that channel. So I think that's something we could very easily do. And I'm sensing that there's probably some enthusiasm to participate in that way amongst the community.
Mark, this is Linda. Mark is absolutely right. And I think there were people assigned at certain point, and that just clearly needs to be updated. And so Mark is absolutely right on that. The other thing I would comment on is that you know, a couple of thoughts while I'm listening to all of this. And one is that what can the select board realistically do? And I, you know, I I think even if we were to engage legal counsel to help us stay on top of the environmental review as as an important part of that resource has to be somebody who has a good handle on the the a PR campaign that goes along with what they're doing. And and that speaks to some of the things you were coming in on, Mary, because the PR campaign that goes along with that will identify some of these other nonprofit and organizational groups to reach out to who would also be making making their plea in concert with us or independently, but at least supportive of where we're coming from. The other thing I was thinking about is that and I'm glad both Megan and Carrie are here this evening because you know, Concord has a lot of asks out right now to our legislatures, at least to our state legislatures. And I think we can't forget that context either. And not that this isn't a high priority issue in terms of what we're hearing from our constituents and and important to the town as as a whole. But I think we need to be mindful of how we coordinate that with the other major asks that we're asking for. And I'm thinking about, you know, you know, things like reinforcing that we want to be one of the ten pilot communities, reinforcing that we need their assistance. And we've been asking for this for the last couple of years in terms of the transfer fee. And there's a lot of momentum happening right now around all of that. And I I'm sure there's other things. I'm just giving you a couple of examples. And then and then as another piece of this, and this was probably mentioned at the last meeting as well, in not to forget and where our federal representatives come into this and how we how we utilize them in this process. And again, a a good consulting firm, whether assuming it includes both legal and and PR would also give us some ideas about that.
I I think that you're right on, Linda, as far as we need not just legal advice, but also a PR, some PR expertise. So
Okay. Is this a time for for
Public comment.
To entertaining some public comment. I want to always favor those people who are in the room. And do we have any people here in the room who would like to make a all right, would you please, we could just start and come up to the table and sit down at the
Sit down, Jen.
Yes, of course.
And identify yourself and name and your
Janet Miller, sixteen forty seven Main Street. I'm a member of the Climate Action Committee. And I want to let you know that we have not actually taken a vote on this issue yet, but it is on the agenda next week. The Tuesday, the thirteenth is our meeting. And we expect to take a vote then. I'm here on behalf of the Chair Brad Hubber Nelson, who is not able to be present. He also suggested that there may be some Climate Action Committee members who might be able to do an independent analysis of the emissions from these planes. So just to have some different set of figures, or hopefully similar sets of figures to what, I'll say, what Heritage has presented.
So, thank you.
What what will your vote be? What what is the question that you're going to be discussing and voting on?
Whether Well, whether we whether we oppose this initiative, I mean, I
All right.
I mean,
Okay.
I haven't, I can't, I can't say what the vote is.
No, I thought it might be a specific action like signing on to a letter or or okay.
I can't, I can't be specific. Sorry.
Sure.
Thank you. We're glad to know that you're thinking about it. Well, let's get the your next door neighbor. We'll go towards move toward the back of the room.
Hello, my name is Lynn Bloom, and I live at twenty five Fuller Lane. I've lived in Concord for forty years and for twenty six years, I've lived immediately across the street from Hanscom Field. So I have a fairly good handle on what has happened at Hanscom Field over the last couple of decades, and in particular, in the last few months. And the change is quite dramatic. The number of the the amount of noise, but more to my to my concern that the horrible smell from the airport, the number of private jets that are sitting on the tarmac running all the time. I don't know what the regulations are. I don't know what the laws are. But I'm told when I call over to Atlantis, which is nearest to us, that there is no real increase in flights and they don't. There are no flights taking off from Atlantis. But what I do know is it has become very comfortable for private and corporate jets to to inhabit Hanscom Field and to fly out of Hanscom Field. There are shuttles in and out as if one is at Disney World, making it very easy. They they advertise their all of their accommodations. And it is now extraordinarily easy for people with who own private jets and corporate jets to use the the Air Force Base. I can, I'm sorry, the the Hanscom Field, not the Air Force Base. So it's a, it's a, it's a, the change is quite significant. From my point of view, this is a wonderful time to really pursue the climate change issue. About twenty years ago, when Anne Shapiro was on this board, we did try as a neighborhood, my particular neighborhood, which is called Concord Homes, right across from the airport again. We tried to hire an environmental attorney and we really didn't get anywhere. But at this point, even globally, France has just, I believe, created a law where private jets are not allowed to fly within two and a half hours of a destination. So there's a lot of change happening, not not only here in the United States, but around the world in support of climate change issues. So I'm very much in support of the idea of hiring an attorney and and pursuing this problem related with the governor, particularly with a very powerful letter related to climate change. That said, I also believe that a multi pronged approach is important. Because while my children are grown, I live in a neighborhood with nineteen homes. And there are a lot of little children in my neighborhood. And when they play out in their yards right now, they're smelling those emissions. They're breathing in those emissions. And that cannot be good for them. And in some ways, I feel like we allowed the building of the newest hangar, which again is right across the street from us, almost without a battle, thinking it was just going to be a substitute for some old, some previous hangers. But this is a big one. And we really need to address the combination of issues. So I am very much for a multi pronged approach, beginning with a letter and including hiring an attorney and pursuing the various other points.
Thank you. I think what I'm glad that you ended on that emphasis, and that is the emphasis, I think that we need to put on this is what we are going to actually do in order to affect the outcome of this. And that is, I think, in many ways, a relatively short term goal. Because if you don't accomplish a short term goal, you certainly don't accomplish the long term goal. So so I think that's what I I'm trying to focus in discussion tonight on what actions that we as a board and as a community can take. And we and that we can take in the near future and actually show some movement in the right direction. And thank you very much.
Could I make one, make one more offer to all of the members of the select board? I would be happy to invite you all over to my backyard so that you can see how and experience what really is going on. And I don't mean to in any way insult to any of you. I know that you're all informed. But I do mean to say, experiencing the change is, you know, I've lived there a long time, and we never had a concern for twenty years with our children growing up there. And now we do.
I think we're motivated.
So can I, can I just ask one? You one question, ma'am? Yeah, sorry. Were you, did you intend to imply that maybe air quality monitoring is something that that you would add to that list of things?
Very, very much so. Yes.
I just wanted to be
There's a lot, been a lot of emphasis historically on noise, and I do think noise matters to many people in the town. But the air quality is a real concern, I think.
Yeah, because I'm not, is anybody aware of what kind of air quality?
We'll get, we'll get to the back of the room at the end. Save, save the
Mark.
Well. Buffy Bush? No.
I didn't know.
No, good. I am Kim Novick, fifty three Temple Road, Concord, right in the flight path of Hanscom. Today, a fighter jet flew over, which is pretty cool and pretty noisy. We don't have the air quality issues directly in our backyard that Lynn was talking about, but noise is definitely an issue. The environmental impacts as well. I remember back in two thousand two, two thousand three, FedEx was looking to come in and put freight operations in Hanscom, and they backed down because of community pressure. At the time, they were looking at, oh, I don't know, probably like five hundred, three hundred jets, three hundred jets coming in each month. And by the end of ten years, they were looking at fifteen hundred jets coming in each month, freighters. Nature reports vacuum. If you open up the door and that leaves people in, others are going to come in too. I'd say I very much encourage the board to fight this as best as possible for the town. And the environment is very important. Thanks.
That's why we're having this discussion.
I understand.
Yes, Neil.
Neil Rasmussen, three ninety three Yesterbrook Road. I'd like to point out that the excise tax we benefit from and the nighttime fees are illegal under federal law. And the only reason we have them is because what the excise tax is grandfathered officially because it was prior to nineteen eighty four. And the nighttime fee is just sort of indirectly grandfathered. And it could be challenged and overturned at any time and taken away. So the opportunity for us to improve or add to any of those is virtually nil. There's nothing we can do, along with, as you know, we have no ability as a state to regulate the noise or the air quality or anything else associated with the airport under federal law. So our challenge is we, if we allow this thing to grow, the infrastructure to grow by a factor of two to four, depending on how you measure it, it's going to uncork something really big for the future. And we got, we need to try and stop this now before it takes off. And the only way to do that really in this state is through the governor.
Thank you. Mark?
Yes, Mark Galis, sixty two Prescott Road. I wanted to support what Mr. Dane had said about the the town hiring their own attorney, because I do believe it's very difficult to direct, you know, for a coalition to direct the attorney's work. I think that Bedford in particular is in a different position because the actual construction and destruction of the infrastructure is on their land and they would be impacted by the electrical and sewer and all all kinds of other requirements. But an attorney that we hire or a firm that we hire will discover things and sharing those things that are discovered with the other towns and their teams and and vice versa, and other groups is is going to be very helpful as a as a collaborative effort. I also wanted to mention this. I mean, it's what what I've heard is that the some of the environmental review process is not able to to stop or deny a project, but just ask more questions, get more information, et cetera, et cetera. So I think there's another aspect, a legal aspect, which is, again, to reexplore whether the sign off by the former governor is unassailable, whether it's legitimate, whether there are flaws in it. I do think that finally, that the other long term goals. I mean, I wrote to Elizabeth Warren and said the FAA should be caring about destroying the planet and everybody's health in the future, not just about whether parts are falling off airplanes or they're falling down. But these are very long term things. The federal, you know, the way things are sort of chopped up, Massport is supposed to optimize on this, FAA worries about that, EPA worries about this, et cetera, et cetera. And there are a lot of gaps between these that should be filled in. It may take a lot of effort over a long time. It's not for the select board to do this, but if we acknowledge these things openly, and we share support for these long term efforts as well, that puts additional pressure on the current immediate plans as well. And I think that's helpful. And it also gets the public more, you know, we're really concerned about long term here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Zoom.
You've got
Anya and Linda Miller.
Linda Miller and Sonia.
Can can I ask?
To speak again. I just wanted to say one more thing, if that's possible. I just want to emphasize the importance. I just want to emphasize the importance the governor plays because the governor makes the appointments to Massport. And Massport controls all of this. So we can make all sorts of recommendations and have all sorts of evaluations, and we can do all sorts of things. But the governor But the governor plays a really important role. So we really, I think we have to begin with a, a really carefully framed letter to the governor. And, and, and maybe some one-on-one work with the governor. I don't know who can do that work, but, uh, she's, she plays a really important role. She is committed to issues of climate change. And so she has a, a very important role here. So.
So I have a question about that.
Yes.
So my understanding is that Governor Baker approved the land swap. And, but we don't know if it went through and the contract signed or not. I'm trying to figure out if we spend all this time writing this letter and everyone signs onto it. But what authority does Governor Healy really have anyway to stop?
Cause Massport still controls the, uh, the airfield.
What is the term? I mean, by the time she appoints new people, it's years from now or whatever.
Won't that be one of the first questions we'll ask her?
We know, we don't really know the answer to that question. And we don't know actually whether the, um, Massport still owns that land.
Right. How can we find all of this out?
Find it out. Okay. We'll need to find it out. Because these are the details that make the difference in the outcome. But the mere fact that the governor, you know, you know, if the nail, if the land has been, uh, conveyed to the developers by the state? Or if it's just been authorized by Baker?
It's, it was authorized and approved, so it's, it's a done transaction. But it, it doesn't really affect whether this project proceeds. Cause it's ju, it was just a little trade of two little pieces of land around the edge. The, the proponent had a private piece located in Bedford and Massport has a piece located on the airfield. The development spans across two thirds of a mile of these areas. And the proponent's going to develop all across the two areas, but wanted to swap two little pieces, trade one from Massport from theirs, and that was done. But the, the whole, the permitting and any other processes that have to go through, even with the FAA, there's a number of steps that still has to occur and the, and no contracts are signed. And, uh, except for the, the proponent owns that Bedford parcel. That's the only thing that's in stone right now. But as far as the project's concerned, it's not fully committed. And Massport could change their mind and the governor could change her mind.
Okay.
And she can't order them to do anything, but she appoints, when you appoint the head of Massport, you have a right to tell them what to do.
And if you look at who the people on Massport are, um, they have been, they're, they're obviously mostly political appointees. Who are, the only one that seems to have any real credentials is the chair of the board, who is the, um, the head of the department, State Department of Transportation. But like there's the former Worcester County Sheriff.
Sure.
And the four-generation, uh, president of the Boston Teamsters Union and other people who have all of the, uh, obviously appropriate experience in order to manage something like.
And don't remember this, don't forget, this is a tiny fraction of Massport's existence. This Logan is like hundreds of times greater for them to manage. The board, a board's attention and everything else is much, it's almost ninety-nine percent spent on Logan. This is a tiny issue for them.
Okay, good. Do we have any other, any, do we have any comments to add to this? I think we are all aware of the fact that, um, that, um, of all the evils that we're addressing. And the question is, how do we, how do we most effectively influence the outcome? And that's what I'm trying, still trying to focus on.
So we should recognize Tanya Galis. We should recognize.
Yes.
Thank you. Tanya Galis, uh, sixty-two Prescott Road. Henry, the reason I am not there is because this discussion started earlier than it, it was posted as. And I want, I didn't want to miss any of it. I raised my hand right away when, uh, Bedford was mentioned. Because what, uh, one thing I have observed from the, uh, Bedford Select Board person who was, uh, in any case, at the, uh, uh, HFAC meeting back in February, when Senator Barrett had just written his letter. She, she explained why she hadn't signed it at the time anyway, because Bedford had further concerns, not that they didn't, they didn't think the climate change issue was valid. So, um, in terms of a divide and conquer strategy, we needn't worry about that, I don't think. Because, uh, uh, it's not like Bedford doesn't have our concerns too. It's just that Bedford has even more concerns and we can always support them in that. So there is no fear of conflicting interests or anything. As governor's permitting, another thing that I have pointed out is that, and, and, and if there is a lawyer, obviously they would know much better exactly how to investigate that. Would be that the terms of governor's permit at the end says, to the extent required by the section four of the Enabling Act. It, it doesn't say, it doesn't say, uh, as required by it. It says to the extent required. And the Enabling Act talks about a reasonable, uh, reasonable terms of, um, projects and, uh, the, of, of operation and construction. So a challenge could be also put, uh, at that level. I just emailed you as you were discussing, uh, the petition, which has signatories, not from just the four towns, but from other towns as well. Quincy, Cambridge, Jamaica Plain, many other places. Uh, and it's, as you probably know, over four thousand one hundred signatures right now. As far as publicity efforts, uh, Save Our Heritage does a great job with that. So, uh, basically I just wanted to encourage that there are a lot of things that, uh, a, a, a well-informed attorney could do with that permit and investigate. And, and that, uh, it's not a conflict of interest with Bedford. It's just that we can support them further in their efforts. Thanks.
Thank you.
Linda Miller.
Linda? Linda?
Yes, thank you. I, um, did want to mention that Mark Giddings is the designee from the planning board to HATS. Um, he was at your meeting two weeks ago. Um, he has kept the planning board up to date on the situation. However, we have felt that, um, there really is no action we can take on our own with regard to, um, this situation. But if the, um, select board finds a role for us, um, we would be happy to coordinate to the extent that we possibly can. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. What I, I will, um, I will follow up on the issue of availability of somebody who is suitable to, uh, monitor the environmental issue. I would like to have somebody on the board.
Can I interrupt for a minute, Henry? Isn't there procurement process we have to go through?
Procurement?
Right. Is there?
There is, depending upon the amount.
Yeah. And I'm hoping the amount is within that limit.
What's the limit?
Well, I have a procurement expert here, so I would turn to Gail Dow, the CFO for a response, for a quick response.
Sorry.
Well, I mean, we'll go through whatever. If I, I would hope, we'll go through whatever the process is necessary. Once we find out what arrangements can be made and what the cost would be. Um, I would like somebody who would step forward to be a drafter of a proposed letter that could be circulated, um, and edited and, um, you know, participate, be something that could be a product that could be, um, approved of and signed onto by, um, all of the interested parties. But we have to start, we need a product to start with. We need somebody to write it.
I'd, I'd be happy to work on it, but, um.
That would be good. I, I actually had you in mind.
Yeah, I can see you keep looking at me. So, um, but I want to check in with Linda. It's a little confusing because I'm the HFAC liaison and Linda, you're the HATS liaison. And I was out of town during the HATS meeting. So is somebody from HATS already starting on a letter?
Not at this time.
Okay, then I will, I will start a draft and send it to, how to, what kind of process do you want, Henry?
Among ourselves, I, I guess that it can, um, if you, if, if you send it to a, a draft to Shannon, then it can be put into our, our, our package for, uh, further discussion.
Well, how about if Shannon, if we can go a little faster? Like if Shannon can circulate it and we can get comments that I could, that we could put together for the.
If we can have a process that would comply.
Yeah, exactly.
But you, 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 you.
I don't think that is allowed, Terry. Sorry.
Oh, um, just, just to be clear, we're talking about a letter to the governor.
Right.
Okay. To the governor.
A letter to the governor with a, a copy to the Secretary of Environmental Affairs. And also now we have a cabinet, um, a cabinet secretary of, 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 of climate affairs. Just recently appointed. And, um, and, and I think that, uh, and that's all very hopeful that we have people on the governor's staff who are specifically charged with dealing with issues of this kind. And therefore I think that gives us a, um, a foot in the door because we're talking to people whose job it is to deal with issues like this. Yeah. So let's carry on.
So, so just to clarify, um, I would write a very initial draft. Shannon would have it. Then the next people would be the board here. And then at some point it would go to the other groups we've talked about, like the park and Save Our Heritage and the other HATS towns.
And I would say that the scope of that, I know it's harder to write something short than it is to write something long, but I'd say two and a half pages.
Oh, God.
It ought to be.
That's a, that's a long letter.
That's pretty long. I was actually thinking of, I think it'll start shorter. And once everybody starts adding, it'll.
Right. Yeah, it is harder to write a short letter. But I think it needs to be short.
Yeah, it does. But we start with something and.
The, you know, the, um, board of, the woman on the board of select, the select board for the town of Lincoln wrote a letter that was short. It was excellent.
She did?
She did. So you might want to start with that.
And do you have a copy of that?
It's in our, no.
Does anybody have a copy they could send me?
We will get you a copy.
Thank you. She's from Lincoln or Lexington?
Lincoln.
Okay, great.
And also Dan wrote a really great letter.
Yes.
Dan Schrager, can you send a copy of that too? That's great. If I can put those two together, that'll really save time.
I think, I think it will.
Yes, thank you.
I think you'll be happy.
Okay. Have we, um, have we beaten this to death?
We have.
Okay, good. So then we'll move on to the next, um, our next adventure. And again, you're all welcome to stay. Um, the next item on the agenda is the, um.
Do you want to take a, a minute?
Yeah. Oh, yes. Sure. Why don't we, uh, why don't we stretch for a minute?
Even though it's. We could stretch our hands by doing this.
Oh. Thank you. Thank you for coming, everyone. Oh, no. All right. What do we do now?
There, there's a lot of papers.
A lot of papers.
Linda, do you know when the next HATS meeting is?
I, I don't think it's been scheduled yet.
Ah, okay. I'd like to go if, when you find out. I'd, I'd like to just observe.
It's great.
They have posted a me, a video of the last one.
They did?
Yeah. It's on the site, May eighteenth. Linda, did, did they decide to have a, um, a tour? I think they were talking about a date that was.
They were trying to set up a tour. I don't have a date for it yet, so I haven't, I haven't gotten any communication that it's been set up.
Okay. I'd be happy to go on that if they.
I'll let everyone know.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
So that's perfect. Yes.
So I just haven't, I think we see requests. These things are really helpful when you put them out.
Sorry, I'm tired. I'm like, I just realized I just totally invaded all your.
Yeah, just include that.
Can always count on me to empty your room.
Is, is Linda Miller in the audience or no?
She was on Zoom. I don't know if she's still there.
Yeah, okay.
Open meeting on jazz.
Oh, okay.
You got sworn in.
So that I can file it?
Yeah. I'm not planning on reviewing it. No, and luckily.
May I make a concern regarding the open meeting law? About the letter that you were proposing, that if, if Terry sends it to Shannon and Shannon sends it to all of you coming from Terry.
No, 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 no. We worked it out, Tanya. I will send a draft to Shannon. Shannon will send it to the board for comments.
That's what I'm saying. That doesn't work, Terry.
The comments will go into the packet and we will discuss it at the meeting.
I understand, but I think, I think Shannon sending it to everyone else after you prepare it, maybe against the open meeting law. It, which is different from each of you sending comments to Shannon and Shannon preparing a document. That's not what we're talking about. That's what. That's what I'm just expressing a concern. I, I, I just, it's not, again, it doesn't matter how you prepare the letter to me, and I agree the faster the better, but I think, I think if, if, if a staff member distributes something that a, a, a select board person has prepared, that's still forum communication through another party. What Henry suggested is, is, is more, more in order.
Okay. Open meeting back into order. And, uh, we will, uh, the next item of business is the, um, is the, um, pension fund, uh, item. And, um, we have all the materials in our package. And, um, so I think that
Just a vote?
If you wanted, if you can just, uh, once over lightly, we don't need to go into the forty pages of facts and figures.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And I speak very quickly, so if I go to
No, maybe we can understand.
Let me know.
So speak slowly, but
Just move the microphone close so that
Great. So just as a quick bit of background, the, on November 16th, 2022, the governor signed Chapter 269 of the Acts of 2022 into law. This act provides local retirement systems with a local option to increase the cost of living adjustment for fiscal 23 up to 5% of the base amount. This approval can increase anytime during the fiscal year, so we have until June 30th to do it, and it is retroactive back to July 1st of 2022. The local option approval is different than traditional COLA, traditional COLA increases. In a town, the chief executive officer, here it would be the select board, must vote in favor to accept the increase rather than town meeting. Town meeting is where we would go to if the COLA base itself was increasing. We have reached out to the retirement board's legal counsel to obtain a little bit of clarity because there are multiple units within this retirement system. They have come back and said that that the legislature did not require approval from the member units within the retirement system. It is purely just the select board that needs to approve this change. And this was voted into the acts in order to assist retirees with the increased cost caused by inflation. This is a one-year change only. It only applies to fiscal 2023. Next year would revert back to the traditional 3% COLA increases. So this is just approving the additional 2% on top of the 3% already granted. And to put it into perspective, the additional 2% is an additional $280 for the retirees in fiscal 23.
And this money comes out of the retirement fund. It's not a budgetary item.
It, it comes out of the retirement, but it will be a funding impact. So there will be an increase in the funding. It's about a $797,000 impact that would be funded over the next five years, so about $180,000 if we fund it over five years, 218 if we fund it over four years, based upon what the actuaries
Funded through the general fund?
The cost to the general fund to fund the pension liability.
It's going to be 190,000 a year for five years?
It's to the assessment of all of it. So the total impact, not all to the town because the other entities as well as
Okay, what's the impact to the town?
I do not, they don't have that broken down because we haven't done
Thought I read 87,000. Did I read that? Maybe I dreamt that.
So that's, I should have, I should have clarified. That's to the entire retirement system. I don't have it broken down by entity or the enterprise funds.
Gail, you said this is a one-year, um, thing and then next year it will revert to 3% again, but this 2% that's this year, it stays in the base, right? And then the, the following year, the 3% is on top of the new base, right?
Yeah.
The, the base is the, um, the four, it's a $14,000 COLA base that's used. So that does not change.
Right. But I mean, um, that, I, I was using the word base differently, like, um, whatever somebody's pension is in 23 with this new addition of the 2%, it doesn't go back down again the year after it. The 3% is on top of that.
The COLA increase is always based on the $14,000, so it's not on your total
Okay.
pension.
Okay.
So the amount of increase in future years would still be three, it would be a smaller increase in future years, but it would still be an increase. Okay.
I really would like to know how much it's going to cost, um, the town and where the money's coming from, because if it's retroactive, it's going to go back to FY23?
It would be in future valuation. So it would, it would impact FY25 and forward.
25. So we wouldn't have to put it in the budget until FY25? And we still don't know how much that would be. And this would normally come out of, would this come out of the salary reserve, Carrie, or would that? But this, no?
No, this is, this is an expense of the retirement system.
Okay.
So it comes out of their budget, which is funded through assessments.
Okay.
Who else is assessed besides the town? The enterprise funds, I guess?
The Concord Carlisle Regional School District, um, the housing and the town are all part of it. And, well, the enterprise fund's part of the town, but they absorb their own assessments.
I'm looking at the actual act here that was in our packet. And it does seem like, help me, help me understand how to interpret this. It says, the sum of the dollar amount of the cost of living increase on the base amount, together with the amount of the retirement allowances, which is what we're talking about tonight, pension or annuity to which the cost of living increase is applied, shall become the fixed retirement allowance for all future purposes, including the application of subsequent cost of living adjustments. So I read that to mean that, that this little, this one year 5% bump would in fact bring up the 14,000 by 5%. Am I wrong?
It brings up each person. So if you're under the 14,000, your 3% gets tacked on to the 14,000, but above that it's limited to the base amount. So if your base amount is already above it, it would apply to just the base amount. I feel like we need a whiteboard.
I'd like to know how much it is.
The, the total, the, the total impact to the general fund.
Yeah, because if we vote to approve this, then it's just, it's part of your budget, right? Well, it is, right?
It'll, it'll impact the assessment beginning in fiscal 25.
Right.
But it sounds like it's going to be maybe about half of that number. I mean, it's going to be like less than 100,000, I'm guessing. Does that make sense, Gail?
Is this something that needs to be decided tonight, or can we get the information and
I can reach out to see if they have the information and it would need to be approved before June 30th, so it would need to come to the next
Stefan has his hand up. Maybe he has the, Stefan. Stefan Bader has his hand up. Maybe he's got an answer. But to, do you want to hear it?
Well, let's see. Mr. Bader, would you like to speak?
Um, I think the question that Mary is getting at besides the dollar figure is, is this compounded? And I think the short answer is yes. It's compounded because it gets built into the base. It doesn't, if this didn't happen, it would be like we'd be a year later on the effect of 3% per year.
Thank you, Stefan. That is my question. Is it compounded? That is, yeah, I think that's I'd like to
Does that give us a different outcome?
No.
No, I mean a different outcome in terms of whether or not we approve it.
I understand. No.
Yep. So, yes, I would agree. It's, it's compounded. The, the cost of living, any of the cost of living adjustments are just subject to the base, the COLA base, which is the $14,000.
But this particular one increases that base? That's what it sounds like.
No, this is, this is a five, if this is enacted or approved for fiscal 23, it is a 5% increase on the COLA base of $14,000
Right.
versus the 3% on $14,000. So yes, each, each year, the, the benefit goes up, but the, but the cost of living adjustment is only ever applied to the COLA base of $14,000. That amount can only be changed by town meet, by a town meeting vote. And you may remember, maybe two or three years ago, we moved it from 12,000 to 14,000.
Okay.
That still doesn't answer the question about the, the impact, but hopefully
Yeah, I would like to know the amount.
How the benefits apply.
Okay. So can we put this over to our next meeting?
Sure.
Okay. So I'm just taking, I don't, and we have just that limited amount of information we need.
Yep.
So we'll put it on the agenda for
Five minutes.
26th meeting. And then we'll move on to, um, the bond authorization. Thank you very much, Gail.
You're welcome. Apologies for that. I had the total numbers. Didn't realize they were unbroken about by each.
Well, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter what information you come ready to, um, provide. It's, the question will always be for something else.
Exactly.
It's our job.
It's like, uh, doesn't matter how many tools you have in your toolbox when
You're always missing the one you need.
Yes, right.
For the next section, I, I'm going to phone a friend, so
Good, good, good. You might need it.
Because this one is critical to approve at today's meeting.
Well, you see, we get the hard part out of the way. So now we're all agreeable. We're going to be, we're going to be completely agreeable.
Be approved at today's meeting.
Well, we'll see. All right.
We're not leaving until it's So included within the packet, I have a couple of memos. One is the memo summarizing that on May 24th, we did have a very successful bond offering. We received 12 bids on the bond. I believe, looking back at last year, I believe we had 11, so we actually had increased participation this time. They were ranked lowest to highest with, I'm going to say, I always say this wrong, Mezaro Financial, Inc. being the successful low bid on this one. And the spread between the high and the low is also within the table that was provided, which was a very close spread, which is good to see on the bond results. What we've also included is a breakdown of the various projects, the general funds exempt, the general fund non-exempt. And as folks know, we did go out with half of the middle school project funding. So we did put forth the 50 million for that. And then there were two from the enterprise funds. I know there were some questions on how this compared to what we budgeted. And this is where, um, I do have to keep thanking Bob and Carrie for all the work that went into getting us to this point, um, that we, the rates were favorable compared to what we had budgeted, which was very nice to see, especially with everything that was going on in the bond market. And as Carrie mentioned, this was also during the time where the debt ceiling was also coming into play. So we were very fortunate. And I know, um, Mary, you had asked one question about how did this compare? And this is about $75 less a year than we had anticipated for the middle school project. So that was
On the median, on the median tax bill? So $75 less.
Yes.
Good news.
And this is phase one. We still have the remaining amount to be funded next year. So this is
So far.
So far, it came in favorable to what we had talked about in the fall. We cannot predict past results are not indicative of future results. Usually not the way that's said, but, um, so we will be going back out next year. Whether or not we'll do all of the remaining next year, it, it's all really going to depend on the schedule of the construction project, where we are and what the cash flow looks like, because we do not want to go out and get all of it borrowed if we do not need all of it. So we will be monitoring that closely over the next year.
Good.
All right. So I have a question. Can you explain what resized means?
This is where
I knew that was going to
Earlier.
It's professor.
I knew that was going to bring up your friend.
We actually were, we were practicing this earlier.
Oh, good.
We weren't sure who was going to have that question, but we knew it was coming.
Uh, good evening, Bob Lurlocher, uh, part-time Concord employee. Um, imagine yourselves three or four years ago when interest rates were 1%. And a broker calls you and says, have I got a deal for you? Concord is selling debt and I can get you 1%. And you laugh at them and say, I'm not the least best interested. And the broker says, but that's where the market is. And you're about to hang up and the broker says, I do have a way I can get you 5%. And so that practice began with low interest rates within the last decade. Um, as an investor, I would pay $110 and I would only get back $100 at maturity. But I would receive 5% coupon in the meanwhile, or whatever the numbers are. So that in effect, Concord on the other side of the trade is paying out more in interest
Right.
than the market would suggest. But it has to borrow less because the 110 is only going to cost you 100 at the end of the deal. So that's the whole idea of the premium and resizing is that borrowing $10 million is no longer ever borrowing $10 million, it seems. I wasn't sure where interest rates are higher now than they'd been, what that would look like. But it appears that this is a practice that's here to stay. Um, the retail investor appears to demand at least 5%. So if rates are below that, there's going to be a premium. And I believe in Gail's memo, she listed all the different premium ranges. One dealer bid over 3 million, one was below one and a half or so million, but all of them were pretty big numbers. So that's, I, I didn't understand all this at first, a few years ago when it started, and you used to have to go to town meeting to get exact authorization for this. And eventually the state figured out, we need to pass some legislation, then you just need to adopt that. And I know Concord's done that. Um, but that's the reason why, um, you know, the thing doesn't look as clean as it would have. So you're not just borrowing, you know, say $50 million and paying it back and then paying the 3.88% annually. You're paying 5% for the early years and then 4%, but you owe it on less total over time. So hopefully that answers your question.
So the coupon, the coupon is five for a few years and then four?
Correct.
Okay, but, but we went out and we actually raised more than we needed or more than the original issue, am I?
Because we received whatever the price was, I'll say 110 on each hundred that was needed.
Yep.
Yes, if we had sold 60 million or whatever the number was, we would have received 66 million and we didn't need that.
Right.
So you resize it down to whatever the amount you actually need to borrow.
When you resize it down, that means you borrow less.
Correct. Less principal, more interest.
Okay.
Same total.
So the coupon is five and then four?
Hmm.
But the true interest cost is 3.88?
Correct.
Very good.
And the true interest cost varies in each maturity. If you're really interested, it's, it's in that packet somewhere. Um, the first 10 years are always the cheapest because that's where the retail buyers are. Then it's actually harder to sell municipal debt beyond 10 years. So that when, um, you know, you see you've got 12 bidders this year, which is even more than 11 last year, that's fantastic. Because last year you were only selling 10-year debt and everybody would buy on, would bid on that. This year you got a number of people, you know, even more people to bid on the other, uh, maturities, which, you know, a firm like Mezaro is expert at zero to 10 years, but they were able to buy it because they made relationships with other people. To, you know, insurance companies or whoever the buyers are, Sandy Smith will know on, online.
He will, he will.
But, you know, I, I think the participation was excellent, really, and the results you got were excellent.
So I, I've got another question. First of all, thank you for doing this. Is it really truly amazing that we got such a favorable interest cost in, in this environment? And I, I want to thank you for that and also for taking, um, our listening to us when we wanted to extend the term. So that was
That was the other, we did go to the 30 year for the middle school based on all the work we did in the fall.
I have a question about the issuance cost, because when I saw that, that was six, close to $600,000. If I get that right, it was close to 600,000, which I, that, I thought that was astounding. So it's like almost 1%.
I, I don't, I think the way you're thinking of it comes costs in the way I am as much as I'd have to check to see
Oh, okay.
Figure Gail's side. Figure Gail cited. But it's going to cost you much less than $700,000 to issue debt. Now, it is a big issue. And our legal costs and fixed costs, but generally your issuance costs are a fixed number. Doesn't really matter how much you're borrowing, there's lawyers, there's bonds, so on and so on. So.
Well, okay, I guess my question is, is that if we borrow money and then we've got to pay issuance costs, so we're borrowing money to cover those issuance costs, right? How does the town appropriate? And this is like almost an academic question. So we appropriate money, we appropriate 100,000, 100 million dollars for the school. But when we go out to borrow that money, we've got to pay more than 100 million. And when is that ever appropriated at town meeting?
Towns have approached it two different ways, and if Concord has approached it two different ways. You can explicitly put in the budget the costs of issuance.
Which we didn't.
Town meeting could see that and vote on it.
Right.
Or you could just roll it into the cost, and that's much more common practice now.
Roll it into the cost of
We we can tell the the marketplace, we need a premium of at least 100,000 in order to pay the issuance costs when you sell this debt. So that's in addition to the 5% and whatever retail wants. The town can say, I need to have a premium that will pay the cost of issuance. And and most cities and towns now do that.
I understand, Bob, but it's just even that that premium depends upon the coupon. So we're paying for the issuance.
Well, the premium is somewhat independent. That's that's issuer driven. We're telling whoever buys it, you're going to owe us 100,000 because we need to pay the costs, because we didn't budget for that. So the true cost of the debt will be 100,000 more than what the market itself asked for, if that makes sense. It it's really, you know, which pocket does the money come out of? It's going to be debt service no matter what. So does it get explicitly listed? Or not? And one of the difficulties with explicitly listing it is, what if you don't have the right number? Because you can't, you can't know exactly what it's going to cost. And what if you budget 100,000 and it's 120,000? You can't do it. What if you budget 100,000 and it's only 60,000? What do you do? So it's simpler.
Not understanding everything you're saying.
Okay.
But I do know that we're going to pay issuance costs and we could, I'm not sure exactly what that number is. And I also know that that was not part of the article that was put in front of town meeting. So we're paying for it one way or the other.
Yeah, it's implied as debt service, I guess I'd say, you know, whether it could have been discussed explicitly or not. Again, the the common practice now, very much so, is it's not an explicit cost. It's no longer listed as an explicit cost, just part of the cost of doing business.
I have a question. When we talked about this at an earlier select board meeting, I think Sandy Smith was there. And one of the questions was how can Concord residents invest in this? And at the time, they said, wait till we do it. And then so how do we get that information now?
Yeah, Sandy and I have talked about that. And you know, since you didn't really know that you had a project until February-ish, that wasn't enough time to really go out and market this to the town.
Right.
So, you know, we discussed doing that part of it more explicitly next year in part two. So for now, it's just people have to contact their broker or their bank if they want to buy Concord debt. You know, whether or not any is still left in the marketplace, I couldn't say. But that's the approach for this year.
But
And then for next year.
More information than that.
Well, you know, if the person has a broker, you know, they, the broker could get you any information. Oh, yeah, I can get you, these maturities are still left at this price if you're interested. Next year, what the town will explore, and I don't know what the town will do, but there's something Sandy discovered called mini munis, which are smaller denomination to allow more participation. So instead of a minimum of $5,000 per bond, you could possibly size it to be $1,000 per bond. And whether that's really worth the town exploring, I can't say, but it's certainly worth, well, I should say it's worth exploring. I don't know if it's worth doing. So that next year, you may want to start talking to the community, you know, in December, January, if if the town is going to issue in April, May. And give the town plenty of lead notice that, look, this is how it's going to work. And again, I don't know the specifics. You know, you're not going to be able to come to town hall and buy bonds. That's not allowed.
Right.
But whether some local financial entity would participate, I don't know.
Okay. All right. Well, I'd like to request that we put that on our agenda for I don't know, what did you say, December?
Yeah, probably October, November.
October. Okay, that's coming right up, actually. Okay.
And and if you don't mind, if you don't mind me pointing this out, I think the board also needs to discuss the Reserve Fund approach. You know, your town meeting has set aside a certain amount of money.
Right.
You don't need to use it. You could, but you don't really need to use it this fall.
You mean the stabilization fund?
Yeah. But you probably will want to use it in a classification hearing in 2024. And it's possible, I don't know, it depends on what you decide, but it's possible you might need town meeting approval next spring.
Right.
So it's something you'd want to decide in advance or at least discuss.
Right. So I'd like to request that we discuss all of this in October. Right. If that's okay, Mr. Chan.
Fine with me, just, but you have to remind.
Right. Maybe Shannon will try. Okay, great.
And while we're reminders, although we have, we have, well, we have to vote on this, don't we?
We do.
Do we have a motion?
Well, I'm a little bit confused, so I have to read this whole thing.
No. You can dispense with the reading.
You can, you can, I think you can move to adopt the item entitled, whatever it is dated such and such, that is in the meeting packet to approve the issuance of the bonds described therein or something to that effect.
Vote that the sale of 58,250,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2023 bonds of the town dated June 15th, 2023 to Mesero Financial at the price of 60,87,912 cents and accrued interest if any is hereby approved and confirmed.
Just for a second.
Yes.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Myself, Mary Hartman, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And the only other thing that's left on our agenda for tonight is the correspondence policy that was in the packet, which I would like to put over because there are some issues that I have with it and I want to change it. In any event, but I also then, so we'll put that on the agenda for our next meeting. And I want to remind everybody, there are two things that are, were expected before our next meeting. One is the town manager evaluations. Is that right?
Yes.
To do on the 26th. And also the the goals, the 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 list of your three top priorities for inclusion in our goals for this this year. And so
Honey, can I ask, so once Shannon has compiled the goals from everybody, what's the, what do you envision after that?
I thought that maybe once she gets those, I can work on creating a amalgamating them, eliminating the duplication and coming up with a document to present to the the board to adopt.
Great.
Okay, great. And I have a question about
Good, very good.
About the evaluation. I, is one of the steps going to be that town manager does a self-evaluation and do, when do we, do we get that before we fill in our? What's the date of that?
So that's, that's a good question. I appreciate you bringing that up because I I think that is due on the 26th as well.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
You may want to see that
Right.
ahead of time.
Because I started working on mine today and I realized I I really need that feedback, I think, before I fill mine out.
So is there, is there any reason, so that would dictate that we would put the, our evaluations off until the subsequent meeting?
Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
That we get the self.
Or we can move, or we can move. Carrie's up. Carrie, how does that feel?
So what if I had the self-evaluation to you for the 16th, by the 16th?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Really? We could push it off.
I don't, is the first meeting in July the 10th? Well, so I mean, it's up to you. I I would be agreeable either to provide the self-evaluation to you for the 16th in time for the 26th or the 26th, if you, in time for the 10th, either one of those is fine with me.
Then the 16th. We'll go sooner. Carrie will do hers by the 16th.
So it will still be
Thank you.
For the 26th.
Here we are. Thank you, Carrie.
So we have to get it to Shannon by the 24th, was it?
26.
26.
Well, that's the day of the meeting.
Yeah. And it's just a deadline. I mean,
Well, Shannon needs to put it together.
She does, but we don't have to do anything about it. It's just, right?
It's just the deadline, I thought. I I don't think, I I don't think that the board was going to present it on the 26th.
Okay, great.
So, right, it would be presented on on the
June 16th. All right. So thank you, everyone, for a wonderful meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, so are we are we not meeting on the 20th?
Oh, what?
I thought so.
Right, we're not.
We're not going to do that.
What?
Meet on the 20th, the Tuesday. So we have
We we talked about it.
Because there was
Rolled it out.
Yeah, I was just a little confused because she kept on saying the 26th was the next.
So our next meeting is June 26. We also, but we are meeting virtually at the Housing Roundtable on June 7. June 7.
Yeah.
On June 7th at 7:00.
7:00 and that's a virtual meeting.
It is. Virtual meeting.
Right.
And I will be on Zoom on the 26th.
Okay.
I will be visiting grandchildren.
Cool.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You got to go around, yes.
Do I have to go around?
Yeah.
Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Okay.